Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is our 29th regular session. And just on a special note, today is the one-year anniversary of this council taking office. We took office a year ago tonight. It was November 26th. It was a Monday evening. We had our first meeting on the 27th. So I just want to say before we get started what an honor and a privilege it is to serve as the mayor of Hagerstown and to serve with all these fine folks up here on the dais. We're going to have our invocation followed by the pledge to the flag and leading us tonight in the invocation is Councilmember Nye. So if you wouldn't mind standing.
Lord, open my eyes to the hurts, needs, and struggles of a world that is so desperately in need of your love. Help me to be your instrument to inject that love into hurting lives. Help me to be that councilperson who will continue to think of our people in our city and try to meet all of their needs. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'll note the announcements on the agenda. We are following the rules of procedure adopted September 24th of this year. We ask that you please refrain from using cellphones during the meetings. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk. It should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Just to let you know our meeting schedule, next Tuesday, we will have a work session at 4:00. Prior to that, we'll be meeting at 2:00 at Hagerstown Community College in a joint meeting with the Washington County delegation to the state legislature. Tuesday, December 10th, we have a work session at 4:00 PM. And then December 17th, we have a regular session at 7:00 PM. Tonight, I would like to recognize some guests that we have for here. We do have with us a downtown business owner, and I'd like to this time present him, on behalf of all the business owners in town, a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. I think everybody knows, heard of Black Friday, and they've heard of Cyber Monday. Well, we have Small Business Saturday as a nationwide movement. And so Pete Priola, come on up. We also have with us John Listition, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Hi Pete. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And thanks for accepting this proclamation, celebrating Small Business Saturday, Saturday, November 30th, 2013, whereas the City of Hagerstown believes that small businesses are the backbone of our local economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for citizens. And whereas the City of Hagerstown supports the efforts of local businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in our community to create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas Small Business Saturday is a nationwide campaign to cultivate business for merchants of small businesses on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas Small Business Saturday will stimulate economic growth locally for merchants by following the tradition of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, two of the busiest shopping days of the year. And whereas residents of our community and communities across the country are being asked to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And now therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisbertz, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize Saturday, November 30th, 2013, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage residents to recognize and support small businesses within our community by shopping at these establishments on these Saturdays following Thanksgiving. So Pete, thank you for all you're doing down here.
Thank you.
And I would invite anybody who hasn't been downtown to rediscover all the great restaurants and shops that are here in downtown, and don't hesitate to come out on Saturday to see all of the good stuff. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, come and get some coffee also.
Pete has the Greens and Grains right on the square. It looks like Aaron wants to take a picture.
Right.
All right. Thanks Pete. Thanks John. We also have some other special guests with us here tonight. I would like to invite the Boy Scout Pack 252 to come up and be recognized. Come on up, fellas and leaders. Oh, 252, did I not say that right? I apologize. So tell us what brings you here tonight.
We're going to be seeing the mayor today.
So you're here to learn about local government? I see you have a Washington County lapel pin, so you've been to a county commissioner meeting? And now you're here in the city council to observe how this government works? Well, that's great. We thank you for being here, and we hope you learn a lot tonight, and feel free to come back anytime. Okay? Thanks for being here. Give them a round of applause. Thank you. Good to see you guys. Nice to see you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for all your work, indeed. And I know these guys are anxious to see themselves on YouTube because we are recording tonight, so don't hesitate to look us up on YouTube, okay? All right. Thanks a lot.
Good job.
Take care.
Thank you.
I gave yes. And just so everybody knows, I did give them a lapel pin before the meeting started. I don't want people to think I'm cheating them. And we also have some other special guests here tonight. Couple weeks ago, we had the 2013 Gridiron Classic, and South Hagerstown High School was the victor. I'm proud to say that it was a great game. There was great sportsmanship demonstrated. Both teams played an outstanding game. First, I want to bring up North Hagerstown's most valuable player selections. So each team coach chooses a most valuable player. And this year's North Hagerstown High School Most Valuable Player is Austin Stone and Coach Dan Cunningham. If you guys wouldn't mind coming up. We have the Honorable Bill Brickner, former mayor, city council member, city administrator and city engineer and Navy veteran, here to present to you, on behalf of the Kiwanis Club, a check for $250 in honor of the MVP. So Austin, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Coach Cunningham, thank you. And let's see. Yes, please, come on up, Mr. Brickner. Well, that's great. Come on up. I know Aaron wants to take our picture. Let's close the gap here. And Coach, would you like to say a few words about why you chose Austin as the MVP?
Austin's been a four-year player for us, and last year, I thought he had one of his best games ever against South in defensive effort. This year, he kind of played a dual role for us, and you know, he scored a first touchdown on an initial drive, and he's been the heart and soul of our defense over the years. So you know, he had a great game, and unfortunately, we weren't the victor, but South High was pretty dag on good. So the recipient from South Hagerstown's well-deserving.
Wonderful. Thank you. Austin, you want to say a few words?
I just want to thank all the opportunity I've had to get this award, and just given the privilege. Good job.
All right. Well, thanks again, and do good in school. Do good in life. Good luck to you. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Mr. Brickner. And now the recipient of the big trophy here. Oh, hold on a second. Guys, I have a couple lapel pins for you too. You can't walk away without a lapel pin here. Here you go. Coach, you got one too. Thank you. All right. South Hagerstown's MVP is Isaiah Smith. Isaiah Smith is coached by Mr. Toby Peer, and unfortunately, a representative from Bulldog Federal Credit Union could not be here tonight, but as a member of the credit union myself, I feel I can fill in that position quite nicely. They would like to present a check for $250 to Coach Toby Peer made out in honor of Isaiah. So if Isaiah and Coach Peer would come on up. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Good to see you. We should get the trophy in the picture here, right Aaron? I know the team thoroughly enjoyed getting to share in the enjoyment of that trophy. And Coach, would you like to? Oh, one more. Sorry. Coach, you want to say a few words about why you chose Isaiah as the Most Valuable Player?
I had an easy decision there, didn't I? He run for a long way. The offensive line, the whole team did well, but you know, he had an outstanding game, as he did so many games for us this year.
Wonderful. And Isaiah, you want to say a few words? Tell us about your future plans?
I just want to say thank you to the offensive line and every, my teammates. Thank you to all my coaches, and I plan to go to James Madison University next year to play football.
Wonderful. Well, good luck to you. Thanks so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Congratulations. Coach, you get the check. All right. Thank you. Oh, and here, you guys get the famous lapel pin too. Did you get to take that trophy and keep it in your case for a while, or does that stay here?
It stays there for years.
Okay.
You guys get it engraved, I guess, or does it?
Okay, that's, yeah, we'll take care of that. All right. Thank you so much. That brings us to citizen comments, and it looks like we have three folks signed up to speak tonight. The first is Dot Klein. I would just like to remind everybody that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual, that meetings are televised and recorded, they're on Channel 25 and on YouTube, and your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. Dot Klein, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and please tell us for the record your name and address.
I'm Dot Klein, 1036 Benjamin Place. I was here a couple months ago about the city park, and I haven't seen much of a change in the city park. So my next step is to write a letter to the Herald Mail, to the opinion page, because you're allowing dogs in the city park. About two weeks ago, I was walking through the park, and I was going down by the concession stand, and a bike went by me. It was an older man, and I was going to turn to the left to sit in the swings, and if I had turned, I would have been hit by the young boy. So bicycles and skateboards are hazardous to people walking in the city park. Now, the dogs are hazardous too. I had lunch two weeks ago with a friend. We went to Hartle's, and in a two-hour span, 11-year-old came down the pavement, and they headed for the children's playground, and the dog dumped. And I jumped up from my, from the bench. I didn't say anything, and the young girl looked up, and then she turned around, went back to the parking lot. Her mother got out of the car, and they came up along the path, and they turned around, and it looked like they were taking pictures. I didn't yell anything. Anyhow, the mother took the dog's leash and took it down the pavement, and they came to the other pavement that went out of city park. And in the meantime, four other little dogs came along, and adults, they're adults, that are taking the dogs into the playground and letting them dump. They're not picking it up. One mother put her little dog on the playground and gave it around. So if you're going to let dogs in the city park, you're going to have to have policemen there to watch. Nothing has been changed in the signs, and I'm dissatisfied with the way, I guess Rodney's handling it, because I don't think any of you went out to the park to walk. That's all I have to say on the park. I want to say something about downtown. It looks pretty crummy. You come up Summit Street, and on your right is the old Shockey Building with three windows covered with white wrapping paper. Sometimes that white wrapping paper's hanging down, and other times, it's not. Then you go on up the street, and at the stoplight, you look over, you see the Hamilton Hotel. It's the same thing. They have paper up, paper hanging down, and if you go on around and go up Summit by the Hamilton Hotel, venison blinds broken, white paper hanging down. And then I come back to Washington Street and go down Washington Street, and on the left-hand side, near Manny's, or maybe it's next door to Manny's, there's a building that I think the city owned, and then they sold it to someone, and now it's up for sale by that owner. Then you go down the right-hand side, and you see, next to the bead place, there's an old building which Grow owns that should be taken down. I don't understand why you all can't do something about these buildings. I think you should decorate them. I have a booth at an antique place on Pennsylvania Avenue, Old Time Treasures. She was asked by a friend, a bank up in Waynesboro, to decorate their window for Christmas, and I went up Sunday to see how it looked, and it was very nice. And I walked down Waynesboro's Main Street, and it's, it's not like they say it is. It looks pretty nice to me. But anyhow, why couldn't you take windows and have a window with, out on the dual highway, you have three antique places. In those three antique places, you have 600 private vendors, and I know some of them would decorate a window for you. So if you had a couple windows decorated by them, you could have a window filled with Antietam Battlefield. You could have a window with the Williamsport CNO Canal. You could have a window with all the authors in the tri-state area. You could have a window with artists, and you could go on and on with how you could decorate those windows. And when people come in town, they would have something to walk around and look at. The last point is, I think you should have a committee. You have the neighborhood committees. Why don't you have a committee with people, with citizens from the community, to sit on that committee and give you ideas as what to do with the downtown? I don't think you have a committee like that, do you?
We have the Downtown Alliance.
Pardon?
The Downtown Alliance actually does exactly what you're doing.
That's all business owners, isn't it?
Not necessarily. It's any stakeholder in downtown. So it could be residents, it could be businesses, it could be...
I can't hear you. Is it me, or?
Yeah, it could be, it's the, it's a combination of businesses and residents, other interested parties, so it's, any stakeholder can be a member of the Downtown Alliance. But there is a group actually doing just what you say, which is decorating the windows. They have a very big push to do that, even in some of the vacant buildings like you're describing. So there are people who are looking at doing just what you're saying, and I would encourage you to participate in that.
Can you turn your microphone up?
I don't have any control of that, but maybe the folks in the technical room can do that.
Can I have a list of the committee members?
Sure, we can, we can, yeah, Mr. Listition there will, can follow up with you on that. John Listition back there can follow.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klein. The next person signed up is Pietro Priola, and hopefully I didn't totally mangle your name, but...
You actually did real well. Pietro Priola, I live actually at 227 South Prospect, but I'm here before you to talk about, just briefly, about Greens and Grains. Before you tonight, you're going to have the expansion for the outdoor tents. There's going to be a vote on it tonight. And I just want to recap a little bit on what my intent is and why I'm doing this. The, as you know, the requirement for a beer wine license, or a liquor license, actually, there's no just beer and wine, in Washington County is 75 seats. And from what I understand through some city officials, that Washington County Liquor Board, it will be going to the next session and trying to get the seating requirements to 50. But at this time, it is 75. So in order for me to survive in this location, as you know, in the last 10 years, there's been three different cafes in that location. Winters are very, very slow. I mean, like today, we must have had maybe about 10 customers all day. But just to recap, my intent here is, yes, is to get a beer wine license and to do a little wine bar with food. But in order to do so, I got to have 75 seats. So the outdoor tents for getting into the wintertime would be a, not a permanent structure, but what I'm trying to do is getting to 75 seats, and then once the seating capacity gets to the 50 seats, to come back and, or maybe with staff, to do something that is adjacent to the building itself, to lower it to 30 seats outside. This would be a temporary thing for a year until the session, Annapolis, gets whatever they have to do in order to lower it to the 50 seats. So, and then in the summertime, it would be more of the same thing that we have talked about than that is, it is in the application, that a sales style more of into an artsy style of a canopy for the outdoor area. So, and again, basically, I'm just trying to survive in that location. The winter's going to be very, very tough, and by doing this, this canopy or this tent thing, outdoor with the outdoor dining, it would allow to, for me to be more competitive to the other restaurants, because I'm a very small cafe. So, and I think that with a wine bar, tapas-style place, it would, you know, really work for me. That's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Next up on the folks signed up for citizen comments is Nancy Allen. Nancy?
Hi. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Penmar Association of Realtors. Our seating president was not able to make it tonight, so she asked me to come in her place. I would like to read a letter that was submitted to the mayor and council by the Penmar Association of Realtors with regard to the crime-free housing ordinance that is proposed. Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing to express the opposition of the Penmar Regional Association of Realtors to the proposed crime-free housing ordinance. We feel that there are steps that can and should be taken before the city pursues a comprehensive regulatory regime that will affect all city landlords, including those that take good care of their properties and properly vet their prospective tenants. First, we urge the city to represent specific data about the problems that this ordinance is intended to address. What do the crime statistics illustrate about the magnitude of these problems? If the problems are restricted to a few landlords and problem properties, a better use of city resources would be to target problem areas. We are aware that the modern policing is a very data-driven enterprise, and we urge the city to cast its net deep rather than wide. We urge the city to collaborate the solution to the problem and that new requirements be imposed only on those properties that have triggered a chronic nuisance property designation, not upon good landlords who are working in good faith to be a good citizen and partners in the revitalization of the city of Hagerstown. And this was submitted by Betty Hayes, who is our acting president at Penmar Association of Realtors. I'm also here on behalf of myself as a property owner, so I'd like to put that hat on for a moment. My name is Nancy Allen. I reside at 924 Oak Hill Avenue, and I am asking you, as a city council, to consider the unintended consequences that could arise from the imposition of such a proposed ordinance. And I will elaborate on that in that I am concerned about the infringement of property rights that this ordinance will impose. And I see this as another layer of government in an attempt to solve a problem that we all can agree exists within our city limits, and that would be the increase in crime. I believe that you are trying to take some proactive steps to solve our problem, and I commend you for that. However, I would ask you to think about this before you jump in and impose this regulation. And here's my thought on that. I've done a little research, because I'm questioning, is this lawful? Is the City of Hagerstown able to impose another regulation on me as a property owner in attempts to try to solve a problem? A problem that I believe exists because we have some social issues that need to be addressed downtown. So in my quest for the answer to that, I have been on the internet, as most people would do, looking at research, studying cases about this, and I stumbled upon something by the National Association of Mutual Insurance Companies, and this was a statement that they made to the United States House of Representatives most recently on November 19th. And the reason I found this to be of interest is because there is something called disparate impact. And I would urge our council to consult with our legal attorney, Mr. Mark Boyer, about this, because of the implications that may arise if you impose an ordinance such as you were suggesting on landlords. In the attempt to create a crime-free area, you may find yourselves in the middle of a lawsuit because of disparate impact. And what, what this could mean to the city is that the unintended consequence of such an ordinance could filter in and become an infraction on the fair housing laws. And not that you would be intending to do that, but it may happen as a result of your ordinance. And what disparate impact is now being interpreted to mean under the new administration is that if that occurs, whether or not it was intended, it can found to be against the law, and you could find yourself in a lawsuit. So that's what I would urge the city to do, is to explore all possibilities, look at this from a broad perspective, and decide if this is what you want to do. I understand that your purpose is to try to reduce the crime, and in doing so, to try to select better tenants and higher rents, and ultimately, our goal is to have more homeowners within the city limits. I think we can all agree that homeowners have that vested interest and take good care of their properties and would give us the value that we're looking for within our city that promote the lifestyle that we're all looking to find. So that would be my, that would be my plea to you as a city and as responsible council members here, is to look at all avenues of this and explore this before you decide whether or not this is a good idea for the city residents. One thing that I will say in your ordinance and looking at this, as a property owner, will this mean at some future time, if you so decide, that there are too many rentals, that you can decide, okay, we're not going to accept any more operating license agreements, and therefore, you know, someone who may submit to get an operator's license could be denied?
Are you asking the question?
I'm asking the question because...
That's ever been on the table.
Well, in the ordinance, it does say, in its sole discretion, if there is a breach of that contract. Well, when I look at that, I...
That's ever been on the table.
Well, in the ordinance, it does say, in its sole discretion, if there is a breach of that contract. Well, when I look at that, I have to ask, okay, well, if they can impose this new layer of government, what else can come down the pike?
Yeah, that's not in the proposed ordinance.
Well, I understand that. But what assurance do I have that future councils may not decide that we have to try to right the wrongs again, and now we need to impose something else that will help to prohibit more rentals in the area?
Whether we have this ordinance or not, Nancy, I mean.
I'm sorry?
I said that could be done, assuming that would be legal, which it wouldn't be. It could be done whether we have this ordinance or not. This ordinance has nothing to do with that.
But does this, is this ordinance even legal now?
Certainly, as far as we know, it is.
I have every confidence that our legal staff has vetted the proposed ordinance. I know that they've studied it, they've looked at criticisms of these similar policies in other areas to strengthen the ordinance that is being proposed. So, I don't think that those are.
So, what would the city council do? Let's, just for a minute, if you will, suppose a landlord, and this ordinance is now in effect, okay? And suppose someone was renting a property and claimed foul that they were now a victim of disparate impact based on this city ordinance. What would the city council do? Because now the landlord is under the ordinance, and they must comply, and they must, you know, go through the steps and properly vet their tenants, including, you know, recommended to do a background study and whatnot. Suppose the unintended consequences of that changes the racial makeup of our downtown. Whether or not that's good or bad, that's not, that's not the intention. If it happens, that can be the argument against our city. And that's what I'm saying, that this is all changing now, and I think we need to be made aware of that, and just kind of look at all of the facets of this, and perhaps that's not such a good idea. So, and anyway, I'll leave you with that thought, and thank you for the time.
Thank you for sharing your point of view. The next item, any other folks want to make a statement for Citizen Comments before we move on to our public hearing? At this point, we're going to move into a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Needs Hearing. Here to present information is Mr. John Kearns from Community and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views and comments from individuals and organizations regarding the city's housing and community development needs. This includes project recommendations that would utilize fiscal year 2015 community development block grant funds. This public hearing is held to comply with the citizen participation requirements of the community development block grant program. After the hearing, the city will continue to accept written comments and project recommendations until December 30th, 2013. All comments should be sent to the Department of Community and Economic Development at 14 North Potomac Street, Suite 200A, Hagerstown, Maryland. Nonprofit organizations seeking CDBG funding can obtain an application at the Department of Community and Economic Development office, or they can download an application from the city's website. Notice for this public hearing was provided in the Herald Mail, on Channel 25, and on the city's website. Notice was also sent via email to area housing and service providers. We will now open the hearing for comments.
Thank you. And I have a few folks that have signed up to speak at the hearing. First is Ms. Robin Robertson with the Community Free Clinic. Please come on up, Robin.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to begin by thanking you for the support that you've shown the Community Free Clinic for many years through the Community Development Block Grant Program. The clinic is in kind of a new position that we haven't been in the past. With the unveiling of the Affordable Care Act, we have seen many scenarios and situations with patients that we have not encountered in the past. In October, for every patient that left the clinic, for whatever reason, we gained two new patients. In November, for every patient that left the clinic, we gained three new patients. There are many people in our community who are finding themselves without health insurance for many different reasons. Yesterday, within a two-hour period, we accepted five new patients. Today, by noon, we had handed out seven new patient packets. Four of those made their first appointment at the time of their visit to the clinic. We are very concerned about this trend. We do actually have a navigator in our clinic two full days a week to meet with our patients, to introduce them to different plans that they might be eligible for. What we are seeing in most instances is that if patients are not eligible for the Medicaid Expanded, for those people that are between the 139th percent of the poverty level to the 400 percent, are finding themselves in situations where they cannot afford the insurance. Many of them are faced with monthly premiums between $200 and $400, with deductibles anywhere between $6,000 and $10,000. So, our patient demographic, the patients that we care for that are working full-time, many of them working two jobs to make ends meet, still are not going to be able to afford health insurance. On the other end of the spectrum, there are many employers in our local community that are dropping their employee-based health insurance plans, because now their employees have another option. But what those employees are finding as they're meeting with the navigator is that they aren't going to be able to afford the other option. So, they're gonna end up, as well, being medically uninsured. Our clinic administration and board of directors have felt for the past two years that this will kind of place an extreme burden on our clinic, and we are seeing exactly that. Even though many thought that the Community Free Clinic would go out of business, we're seeing the extreme opposite, in that we are being heavily burdened with many new patients who need our services. I would ask that you continue to consider the Community Free Clinic for continued funding. Your support is vital in our laboratory program. The funding that we receive from the block grant program funds our lab program. As you know, we can't care for patients if we don't have safe parameters. And the way that we measure parameters is through blood testing. That shows us where the patient is at the current time and allows us to provide safe treatment to them. And after a period of time, we can draw blood again and measure the progress that they're making, or lack of progress, whatever the case might be. So, this is a very, very vital tool in healthcare across the board, is being able to monitor patients' baseline lab studies and their progress or lack of. So, I just ask that you continue to understand the importance of the clinic in our community, and that you will continue to consider supporting this vital program, and that we're engaged full force in trying to meet as many of the needs in our community as we can. But already, we know that we're facing great challenges. So, thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all the work you do. Next up is Mr. Doug Wright.
Mr. Mayor, council, folks, thank you very much for this opportunity tonight to come. And thank you for the support that you and your previous boards have given Holly Place and its care for its residents. Our residents are folks of low income who need assisted living and cannot get that elsewhere, either through families or through other facilities because of their income. Almost all of our residents, well, all of our residents are supported by you all through the food program, but also by all the money that's continuing to be raised in the community on their behalf. No one is there paying the full amount that's needed to take, to do their care and take care of them. Grettably, we only have 15 beds. Those beds are always full and are waiting this to quite long, and always in a state of flux, but your support has allowed us to continue to provide the care for at least those 15 people, and we greatly appreciate it. So, on behalf of our board and our residents and our staff, thank you very much, and we certainly would appreciate any, all in future, and any and all future support for Holly Place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thanks for the work you're doing there. Next up is Ms. Vicki Bender, Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your past support. Since 2009, HNDP through the Hagerstown Home Store has served 52 clients with the CBD Down Payment Assistance that has been matched by the state of Maryland with $168,000. HNDP is a qualified community partner with the state of Maryland, and by using HNDP as the administrator of CDBG funds for down payment assistance, Hagerstown home buyers can receive additional funds. The city could also enhance CDBG performance measures by providing fair housing counseling funding to HNDP via a block grant. This would allow the city to report the number of individuals served by HNDP in the city's annual report to HUD. I'd just like to thank you again for your support and your consideration.
Thank you, Vicki. Thanks for all you're doing there. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of their organization for the Community Development Block Grant Funds Needs? Okay, well, thank you all for the work you're doing in the community, and we appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts with us here tonight. And that'll end the hearing. We will keep the record open for 10 days to receive correspondence from folks if they couldn't make it to the hearing tonight. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is city administrators' comments.
Just like to wish mayor and council a happy Thanksgiving. Nice holiday coming up on Thursday. And just a reminder, because of the holiday, the collections for refuse and recycling on Thursday and Friday of this week get pushed back one day. And that's it for me.
Well, happy Thanksgiving to you as well, Mr. City Administrator.
Thank you.
Next up is mayor and council comments. I think I'll start on my left, and we'll work to the right. Ms. Nye.
Just happy Thanksgiving.
To you too. Mr. Munson.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Metzner.
Very happy Thanksgiving and happy Hanukkah to all those who are celebrating it.
Indeed, thank you. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, for a change, I'm gonna be a little wordier than that.
Oh, okay. We'll forgive you.
First thing I want to do is, we had the volunteer luncheons on Friday, and I want to say it over and over again, we can't appreciate how much they do. A number of them were in the audience that just left. I'll use, the Planning Commission, as an example, countless hours have been spent, not just on cases, but on revamping all the city's zoning codes, subdivision codes, and everything else. A lot of hard work, all volunteer, all people that are, I think, get a sense of accomplishment from working with interesting projects, and many of them active in charities that serve the city as well. So, I just can't, and on all the boards and commissions, that's just my personal example. Then, just briefly, the Maryland Municipal League met last night, and the president and legislative affairs coordinator were there, and we briefed the group on the two priorities for this year, the first being highway user revenues, of which the state has held back all but a small share since 2010, I believe. And the second thing being a study or an exploration this year of the duplicate taxation by counties of municipal services. So, I think those things are moving forward, and both ones for, in fact, they both will affect our budget extensively.
Thank you, Mr. Alshar.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thanks. Mr. Alshar.
A couple of things. I also attended the MML dinner with Marty and some other folks last evening. I also attended the volunteer luncheon. I think everybody was there. And, you know, I think that everyone being present from the body shows that we really do appreciate all of the countless hours and the uncompensated work that we employ our volunteers to do. So, thank them. And I also attended a meeting of the Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership. I know that we have scheduled to hear from them, I believe, in January. However, I will reiterate my comments to the mayor and council that I have provided to that body in attending their meetings. I believe they no longer have a director. I'm not certain what direction that will take. I'm not certain that that body has a clearly defined role and purpose at this point. However, I think that sooner rather than later, we need to continue those discussions. We need to continue to evaluate the value of that, you know, organizational structure. I know that staff is in process of working with some of their folks on establishing sort of those goals and guidelines, and I would hope that that would be properly vetted, you know, between the bodies. As that process unfolds, I think that there is value to recognizing that entity in some capacity, and certainly value to not having a board meet month after month without guided purpose in doing so. There are a couple of other things I wanted to touch on this evening, and it's interesting the change in mindset that a few hours will make, but I'm gonna touch on some of them anyway. The first is, you know, as everyone's aware, we've continued to negotiate with our unions. And there were two comments in the past few weeks, one of which this week was a misrepresentation, that this body was the direct negotiator, which is not correct. And the second, that citizens contact the mayor and council because of the holdup. And I will reiterate over and over, as I voted no to go into executive session this evening to discuss those contracts, I continue to believe that what we discuss in that closed session related to those matters, really, when you get down to it, the only folks not aware of what we're doing at this point are the citizens, and those are the folks that foot the bill. And I continue to believe we need to have at least as full awareness as possible to that citizenry, and therefore, I completely agree with the comment that citizens contact us, and not simply contact us, we simply have that discussion in plain view of the taxpayer. The second item is an email we received, and it was mentioned again at an EDC meeting. And I'm not certain where it stands. I know we have a meeting coming up with the delegation, but I do find it a little odd that there appears to be some drafting of a neighborhood improvement zone legislation that may be taken to the state that would have an impact on downtown, and we really haven't had any single discussion about that, except an awareness that somebody outside of this body is proposing legislation to the state that this body has no real knowledge of. And I would hope that, you know, in the course of discussion with our delegation members, we would have a better understanding of what folks are attempting to propose on our behalf. The other item is, we did have, I believe, scheduled a workshop for discussion of the budget this evening, which obviously did not occur because we had other matters to attend to. But I would stress, we had several good conversations about the budget, and would continue to stress, I do not want to be sitting here in March without concluding those steps and reviewing our budget, only then to get the hole that we know that we're facing and attempt to address it then. So, you know, the sooner I think we can get back on track with working through those facets of the budget before March, I think the better positioned we will be to address the budgetary implications in March. And the last two items, one is the Alexander House, I believe, has went to settlement. I will express very plainly that I have obviously a certain degree of frustration with how that entire process unfolded, understanding that's a completely private entity, but also understanding that we, to a large degree, watched as an entity sort of re-upped that subsidy for another 20 years for concentration of subsidized housing in our downtown. And I'm not certain that that is the best course of action for improving the conditions of our community. The last item is in relation to the stadium, and I have, you know, a bit of frustration that we received correspondence in October, that we had notified the state, you know, hey, the private funding didn't come forward, the issue is largely dead. And since that time, have had at least two additional pieces of correspondence of interest from other minor league teams, and this notion that, you know... from other minor league teams, and this notion that, you know, that there is an interest from this city in courting a team from either the California League or the Northern Penn League to come here. I will only speak as one council member in saying that I do not want to experience that Groundhog Day all over again. I think that the community has loudly spoken in both their actions at the polls and both their actions in lack of attendance at that venue over time, and I do not have an interest in courting additional teams to come to a stadium, only to, say, two or three years out, in any economic climate, now we're here, now build us a new stadium. I do not think that's productive. I do not think that is fresh, and I do not think that is the right direction to take. And I am further disconcerted by that, given the fact that we have been told for some time now that the stadium was not of a condition to play in for minor league standards, and we are set to approve a whopping $15,000 in improvements this year to make it ready for play. So I just don't find those to be in concert with one another. I would continue to suggest that we not pay the upwards of $100,000 to subsidize the play of the team next year, and I would further venture that we look for new and different ideas for use of that property, and that would be the direction that I think we consider.
Anything else? Well, I do also share in the Thanksgiving wishes for everybody, and want to echo the thanks to all the volunteers on the various boards and commissions. We did have our luncheon last Friday, and I noted that we were having that luncheon on the 50th anniversary of the assassination of President Kennedy, who famously said in his inauguration speech, ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. And in that room, at that luncheon that we were all attending, there was over 500 years of volunteer experience, just in that room alone, and those are all folks who have asked what they can do for their city, not what the city can do for them. And so we really appreciate their willingness to volunteer and put in that time and energy for the betterment of the greater good in the community. I will, just to touch on some of the comments that Mr. Alshar made, I want to reiterate that our negotiating team remains intact. There have been no changes when it comes to who represents the council. When it comes to our, the staff folks, Ms. Paulson and Mr. Nice Warner, are doing an excellent job, and we get positive feedback from the employee groups who are dealing with them. When it comes to HNDP, I just want to let everybody know that staff and I have met with members of the Executive Committee of that board. Mr. Marshner indicated to me that he would like to proceed with a January report, so we look forward to hearing from them and looking for the direction that that board is going in. As far as anything going with the stadium and the niz, I have only the same information that Councilmember Alshar has, which is that there is some kind of proposal out there. I have not seen anything in writing as to what that looks like. And in terms of a stadium, I can tell you that we are, I am not actively courting any particular team, but I can tell you that we are receiving interest from teams who are looking to relocate. So we are not actively courting, but they are actively seeking our attention. And so I did have a meeting last week with the President of the New York Penn League and an owner of a team in that league, and those discussions, no promises were made or anything. It was simply to share information and to have a conversation. So that's where we are with that. Otherwise, again, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the Mayor and Council meetings held on September 17th, October 1, October 8, October 15, and October 22 of 2013.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Under unfinished business, we have the approval of an ordinance, Chapter 64, Building Construction, Article 3.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the Mayor and City Council adopt an ordinance to amend this code of the City of Hagerstown, Chapter 64, Article 3, Property Maintenance, to update the smoke alarm requirements to be compliant with state law. These updates will establish standards for power source in one and two family dwellings and a construction date for required interconnection. This amendment will improve the safety of residents and first responders.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Next up, Item B, under unfinished business, is the approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 176, Dealing with Peddlers and Transient Dealers.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council to approve an ordinance to replace Chapter 176, Peddlers and Transient Dealers of the City Code, with a new Chapter 176 to be titled Vendors, Peddlers, and Transient Dealers. The new chapter establishes the requirements and procedures for the issuance of licenses, establishes fees, and provides for denial or relocation of licenses and penalties for violation of the chapter.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Under new business, Item A is the approval of a resolution for the University System of Maryland Police Services Memorandum of Understanding for University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the University System of Maryland of Hagerstown, which sets forth certain police services the Hagerstown Police Department will provide at the University System of Maryland Hagerstown Education Center. The term of this agreement shall run through June 30, 2016.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. Next up, Item B is the approval of a resolution for the Main Street designation.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to approve a resolution authorizing the City of Hagerstown to apply for a Main Street Maryland designation from the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of Maryland, and to support the administration of the program in downtown Hagerstown.
Have a motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? I just want to say, good job by staff in putting together this program, and look forward to a successful program.
And don't forget sustainable communities.
That's next week. We see you then. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Next up is Item C, Approval of Legal Services Contract Extension.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the tax retention agreement with the law firm in Aaron and Boyer to serve as general legal counsel for the City of Hagerstown for the calendar year January 1, 2014 through December 30, 1, 2014.
Have a motion made by Mr. Metzner and a seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agreement is approved. Next up is the approval of bulk diesel fuel purchase.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the bulk, did you say diesel or gasoline?
There's two.
I have, the first one here is the bulk diesel fuel purchase?
I put them backwards in my pack. Hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the bulk diesel fuel purchase for city operations from Cato Inc. The bid price is 3.1311 per gallon. The estimated annual cost of diesel fuel is $313,110 based on an estimated annual use of 100,000 gallons. The contract was competitively bid by the Washington County Purchasing Department to obtain a better bulk rate for Washington County, the Board of Ed, and the City of Hagerstown.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
How many, just out of curiosity, how many times in the past have we done this? Bid it together?
It's been many years. I can't tell you how many times, but it's been a practice to do that on vehicle fuel and heating fuel, too.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the bulk purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Purchase is approved. Next up is the approval of bulk gasoline purchase.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the bulk gasoline purchase for city operations from Petroleum Traders Corporation. The bid price is 2.7478 per gallon. The estimated annual cost of gasoline is $315,997 based on an estimated annual use of 115,000 gallons. Contract was competitively bid by the Washington County Purchasing Department to obtain a better bulk rate for Washington County, the Board of Ed, and the City of Hagerstown.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Purchase approved. Next up is Item F, Approval of Water and Wastewater Chemical Purchases.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the Mayor and City Council approve the expenditure of $250,095 of wastewater division funds and the expenditure of $577,451 of water division funds for the purchase of all chemicals. The purchases will occur in the second half of FY14 and the first half of FY15. Chemicals which are used in the treatment processes employed by the divisions were bid through the city-county joint bidding process utilizing county bid PUR 1235.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshar, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Purchase is approved. Next up is Item G, Approval of Funding for City Park Sculpture.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a life-size Black Bear sculptures called The Fishing Lesson to be located along the shore of the City Park Lake. City funding for the project shall be $5,000 towards a $22,000 sculpture and an additional $2,000 toward initial printing of the associated children's book. Funding shall be from the CIP contingency. Further authorize staff to assist with fundraising to cover the balance of the sculpture costs and utilize staff time and operating funds to install the sculpture. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sculpture is approved. Next up is Item H, The Acceptance of the Maryland Bike Ways Grant.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Maryland Department of Transportation to receive a grant in the amount of $70,000 for continuing bicycle-related improvements in the city. This approval is conditioned on the approval of the agreement by the city attorney. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
I want to congratulate staff for doing this. The Bicycle Advisory Committee has been a very successful organization, and staff, to say the least, have been fantastic at getting us grants, and good for them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Led by world-class city engineer Rodney Tishu. Thank you so much. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agreement is approved. Next up, Item I, Approval of the Application for the FY2015 Program Open Space Projects.
Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of an application to Washington County requesting FY2015 Program Open Space funding of improvements to the city's recreational facilities by priority as follows. One, Kiwanis Park Creek Access and Paths Flood Plane Work $90,000. Two, City Park benches and picnic tables $27,000. Three, Staley Park Pavilion $22,500. Four, Community Garden Location to be Determined $27,000. I further move to reallocate FY2014 funds toward the City Park Bandshell for additional fixed seating $22,500, and the Fairgrounds Park Outdoor Exercise Equipment $22,500, so work on both these projects can occur in 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, the council moved money around so that we could do the City Park Bandshell seating expansion, and I think that's something we've all heard about from constituents, and I think that's a very good project. Doesn't mean other things won't get done, it just means hopefully that'll be done in priority this year.
And I just note, I am voting against it for Item Number Four, the Community Garden. While I certainly understand its intentions are noble, I think in application, they have not proven to be successful.
Any other discussion? Mr. Tishu, would you like to say something?
I was just answering any questions I thought there might be.
Oh, okay.
I guess I will point out that the Staley Park Pavilion is in the FY14 allocation now, but we've had several requests for this outdoor exercise equipment at Fairgrounds Park. So what we're doing here in this motion is kind of moving the exercise equipment up to this year and using the funds this year so we can install it in 2014. Staley Park Pavilion will slide back one year to 2015. So that way, we can get both the bandshell seating and the exercise equipment done in this calendar year, coming calendar year. That's the plan. Just want to make sure it's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney.
Does anyone have questions for him?
Rodney, I do. What is the driving force with the Community Garden?
Well, I think there's been some discussions from, I have had a few people inquire about them. We were going to do a survey of the community to see how much interest there really is, and then I think based on that, then we would probably come back to this body and discuss it and see how we want to move forward. But if we are going to do one, we're going to have to have some funds to do it, and that's why we put it in this POS request.
Well, I know, because when we had it before, and it was $15,000, and then it just seemed to go nowhere, and for whatever, people just didn't seem to want to be involved. And that's what I'm wondering as to whether or not it's going to happen again. You know, we're going to be in the same dilemma.
We hope to, if the survey comes back, and there's people that are so interested in it, that want to set up a committee to help run it, you know, make it successful, you know, then we'll present that to you. And if we don't get much feedback from the community, then we'll just back off of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. Last but not least is the approval of a license agreement for Greens and Grains at Public Square. Section to table. Second. Motion is tabled until the next one.
Well, there's a motion, we have to vote.
Oh, all in favor of tabling this item?
Yes, we need that discussion.
Oh, any discussion?
Well, hearing the resounding silence on the motion, I think we need in a work session to get an answer from, at the very minimum, the adjoining property folks, who I understand are objecting to this. I support the concept, and I support what we're trying to do here, but I think we have to take it all into consideration, and especially, we need to get some feedback on how fast we can get changes in legislation. We're meeting with the delegation next week. You know, I understand this problem is mainly about trying to get the slipper license, and I'm not beholden to 75 or 50 either. I think a gentleman like this and his business, we ought to be able to do this. So I'd like to talk to our delegation. I think staff needs to come back to us in a work session and explain the results of their discussions with the adjoining owner and what other alternatives may be possible. I don't want to see this die, but I think that's what we need to do.
And me, obviously, I am opposed to the idea
And B, obviously, I am opposed to the idea as presented, but I would second the motion to defer to those that want to have further conversation about it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I am voting against the proposal to table. Here we have a new business in downtown Hagerstown that could very well go out of business because of lack of business. And I think that the city council needs to help this business to continue. And the building in question, beside Greens and Grains, is a very inactive building, and I don't see that putting up a couple of tents there is going to affect them very much at all.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think our next legislative session is the third week of December.
December 17.
Do you think there are questions, as Mr. Metzner indicated, and perhaps there's a better resolution? So, we do need to look into that. I agree.
Any other discussion? Motion to table was by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Alshar, I believe. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So, the motion to table carries four to one. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you all very much.